Okay, so this is a recording of the meeting of the trustees of the Southwick Public Library. It is May 11th at 7:04 PM. And if we just want to go, we'll start with the people here, just say your name and then I'll move to Jen and Tammy.
Michael McMahon.
Maria Gallo.
Tracy Naswar.
Tammy Syak Baselan.
Jen Balden.
Great, okay. And me, and I'm here. Lynn Blair, I'm always here, okay. So, and you guys on Zoom, I sent everything to you. Did you guys get the documents and stuff so you can at least see them? I figured that would be a lot easier than going through and trying to screen share and try to change screen after screen. So, we have, oh, sorry, Mike. Everybody got a copy of the April minutes? Actually, I see one thing, the call to order at 7:05 3 PM. I will, I think I still have the documents, so I'll make that. Is there anything else that anybody noticed?
I make a motion to accept the minutes with the above amendment.
That was Tracy.
Tammy seconds.
All those in favor? Michael McMahon, yes. Maria, yes.
Tracy, yes.
Sorry, Tracy. Tammy, yes.
Balden, yes.
Okay. Okay, so I have, I'm sorry, I normally make packets for everybody to hand out, so I don't have to go around in a circle, but I just did not have time this week. If you wanted to send those around. There should be three.
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
So, April looked busy day. April was another really good month. So, we had 4,0965 circulations, 29 new cards were signed up for. So, yeah, it was, it was a pretty successful, busy month, and I think May is kind of shaping up to look exactly the same. So, I think our circulation numbers are looking fairly excellent.
Excellent.
Jerry, I'm very happy to see it. We are, we are been busy and it's, it's been really nice to see. Oh, and I'll send around, I have the evening numbers too. I've just been keeping track of the evening numbers just to kind of get an idea of how things look like. Daytime and evening, so we can get an idea. So, the numbers at nighttime, obviously not as much during the day, but I mean, still, still quite a lot.
Good.
So, yeah, again, very, very happy with everything.
25 new cards, that's really awesome.
There it was. I think it was 29, yeah, so 25 in the day and four in the evening hours.
That's really good.
That is quite excellent. I'm very happy with that. It's really nice to see. Any questions or comments on those?
No, I think it looks great. That was awesome.
Great, okay. So, moving on to old business, we are still working on the LSTA grant. Our funds are running through, we have to have all the funds spent by the end of September. So, we are working on, I have two adult events planned for June, a resume and cover lady, cover letter writing workshop. And we also have, this gentleman is doing another program on like tools for managing your websites. So, kind of something geared towards somebody who might already have some type of business or business idea, and then somebody who's looking for a career.
And it can be anybody who goes.
Oh, yeah, 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 anybody, anybody, definitely welcome to anybody.
I just want to say, I told my, my work group and they're very excited because I can take, we can watch over Zoom and instead of just having, choosing for, like, everybody who wants to do it can join in this, that workshop. So, thank you very much for reminding me of it.
If there's, I do have a little bit of funds left for events that I haven't scheduled yet. So, if there's anything that, anything else that you can think of that would be helpful, just let me know. And I'm thinking of trying to schedule them through the summer or into September. So, just.
Be networking?
Yep. Yeah, I think, and I think the Zoom, the Zoom format works really good because I think the people who are going to these programs are just like super, super busy. So, being able to kind of jump in and do it right from home seems to work really well.
Yeah.
Great, thanks Tammy. And so, let's see, oh, our telephone system update. So, I, after we got the prices and everything, I was, I was thinking and I was like, well, after we got the prices, we didn't get the quotes in time enough to put it into our proposed budget with the town. And I wanted to get everybody's feedback, but I don't necessarily feel like this is something that we should spend our state aid money on. I feel like this is something that should probably be funded with our town budget. I don't know how anybody else feels about.
How much are we talking about?
Couple thousand, you know, so it's, it's, it's a little bit more pricey than I honestly thought it was going to be because I have to do some rewiring. So, you know, honestly, I mean, we can, we can work with what we have for now, you know, until we can factor it into next year's budget or the year after next year. You know, you know what I mean? Because I don't, I feel like this is something that, you know, the state aid money we get from the state, we feel like that's kind of for, for extras, programs, furniture.
More like maintenance.
This, yeah, it's maintenance, it's not necessarily infrastructure. We, you know what I mean? It's, it's something that, you know, it's, it's the building, it's our telephone system, it's kind of essential, so.
Like the sprinkler system or the insulation system.
Yeah, so while it's, it's not really as, as expensive as something that might be like a capital project. I, I do feel like, and I wanted to just get your feedback, I really, I do feel like it's something that should probably be funded with the, the town budget as opposed to, to state aid.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Okay, great. Yeah, because I mean, I think we can get through with what we have. We haven't had any issues as of late. And then, I know, right? I shouldn't say that. So, yeah, so I think we can get through with what we have and then can really investigate for the next budget round and factor that into our budget. Because I don't, we haven't, we don't really ask for anything technology wise, you know, we cover our computers through state aid, so it's, it's just, which I, which we probably shouldn't do, but I think we've done it for so many years that trying to build it back in is just going to be too much, but. So, that's where we stand with that. Fun stuff, survey results. Just watch the staple on that one, it's a little pointy in the corner.
This way I'll be able to read some of the.
I, I notice, I, I will admit, and I'm sorry for those people who are on Zoom who only got my email, I noticed after I scanned it that some of the pages have flipped around.
I'm like going.
I know. I've been having trouble with my scanner and I was, I saw that a little too late, like. So, overall, very positive responses on the surveys. I think generally, mostly what people are looking for is, is more open hours, more Saturday hours, more programs, which is wonderful. I just, you know, I think we, we're doing a lot of programs already, so I'm going to try to, instead of increasing the quantity, which I don't think we have the staffing or the time for, try to get a little bit more variety in there. But we did get some really wonderful feedback that I just passed along to our children's staff. Our children's room is, has gotten a lot of good compliments, so that was really nice to see. Molly and Dana make a great team in there. So, yeah, overall, I was very happy with the, with the responses. They were very positive as a whole. And definitely gave us some great ideas to keep, keep things going. And it's also really helpful to see what people want with programs too. And I noticed, I noticed, I think, I think it's been mentioned to me a couple of times. I know somebody said in here once, but I think it's also been mentioned to me in person that somebody would really love to see a UFO program. So, we have some people coming to talk on UFOs in August.
Yes.
She'll be really, I don't know, I love that kind of stuff.
I'm all excited now.
Yeah, so it'll be really fun.
I'm sorry, did you say UFOs?
Yes.
Oh, yay.
It's just going to area.
I went there, I went to Area 51. Been there, done that.
So, yeah.
Ate at the diner.
Nobody can't say we don't have variety, so we'll have UFOs in August, so that'll be fun. The other big thing that I also really took from this is people are really asking for more daytime adult programs, which I'm going to explore. I have a couple daytime adult programs scheduled for June and over the summer, just to kind of test the waters and see how well attended they are, just to get an idea. And we will go from there. So, did anybody have any questions or comments or anything on the?
I think it was very good data. I looked at it black and white, so some of the stuff.
That's also, also the scanner, as opposed to flipping pages also did not do anything in color, so again, I apologize.
No, but it gives you good data.
Yeah, good, good data.
Some of it is, these are the things we're doing, such as the children's room, they said, in the last year or so, they're very happy, more programs, et cetera, which is good. And in effect, then that kind of tells you, we probably need to do more of that kind of stuff.
We, we can, we can, the, the hard part is, is, is I think our staff is doing the most, you know, with what we have. So, you know, I was talking with Molly and she's saying, people are asking for more storytimes and everything, but, um.
Although, if somebody wants storytimes in the afternoon.
Yeah, yeah, so, so people are asking for more, more storytimes, more kids events, um, you know, and with, with more staff probably. But I know, I know the two of them, you know, they're kind of doing a lot already. So, I think, you know, as long as we try to keep the variety and hopefully go from there, yeah, so we'll take everything. Yep, Jen.
I was wondering, the page that talks about how people got information about events and programs. It looks like the biggest ones were Facebook and one of the other ones, I think it was the, the link, the library email, no, sorry.
Yeah.
Library Links Newsletter. And I was wondering which Facebook pages are broadcasting the information? And who's in charge of putting that information out? Because, because some of the other information was that people didn't know about some of the programs in which they had, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so we're going to work on our communication. The Facebook is, is basically run by me. So, so I try to post frequently and I do ask that other staff when they have something to post to send it to me and then I can post it. And I do also, I do also share to the, the Southwick community Facebook groups as well. So, I think that's kind of increased our reach a little bit. And then, yeah, and the Library Links Newsletter as well, you know, we, we've started putting that, you know, we put it in the town hall, I sent some to the senior center. Somebody asked to send it home with the messenger, which I think is the Council on Aging's. So, I might, I might see if the friends are willing to just like, you know, because I think they, they only like to mail it out to people who are on the friends list. But maybe we can do like a special one month thing and send it out with the messenger and be like, you know, if you want to continue receiving it, you know, here's how you join, so on and so forth. So, I may talk to Cindy at the senior center about that. Can't hurt. But yeah, and then we are, I, I do, I know we do need to keep up. We do have the library email list and I think Molly's done a really good job about getting a lot more attention for the kids ones. But I still think a lot of people don't, don't know that we have them or don't know how to sign up, so that's probably another thing we can explore.
Um, I just had an idea that popped into my head because I was just thinking about the keyboard that you have. Have you ever had any type of daytime program either for kids, teens, or whatever, like teaching people about how different musical instruments work?
We don't, we haven't, I don't know, not to my knowledge, we haven't had anything like that. If you, I can look around and see if I can find somebody knowledgeable enough about music insurance, or if anybody knows anything, please pass it along and.
Oh, you know, we're probably really good at that, that, um, high school music teacher. He lives straight in Southwick, he's excellent. And he does a lot of, he loves doing community outreach too.
Well, you know, I've seen, and I've seen people do this in like pre-COVID times where they do like, yeah, they do like a musical instrument petting zoo kind of thing. Or obviously, you know, not, we don't want people playing the same musical instrument one after another. If they're playing the flute or something, but you know, we can, maybe we can do like, you know, come in, take, you know, see the piano, see the different things and maybe it will help people or inspire people too.
To be able to get ukulele lessons.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
A couple of grants that the Cultural Council funded.
Yeah. I've been trying to find.
He's a high school band person.
Robert.
I don't know who it is, I can't.
Oh, my God, I can't. I shit terrible.
Oh, yeah, I, I, a couple of people asked for more music programs. I've been trying to find like, um, a reasonable, you know, it's hard to get like a band or something to go outside because the prices are so. And we don't really have the good yard space for it or, you know, electricals or anything for that. But, but something in here, like I think people like the Celtic singer we had, so that was, that was different.
The one we're used to use, some guy, I think he was a teacher or something from Enfield. And he had some kind of keyboard and he could play musicals of 30s or 40s, or he could do stuff of rock or folk from the 60s or 70s. And you'd get 30 or 40 people sitting here, listening to him. I don't remember what his name was.
With Diane?
Oh, yeah, she probably was.
So, maybe I'll ask Diane. So, he did, what did you say, 40s and 50s music?
He did all sorts of stuff. He, he could do 40s or 50s, he could do 70s or 80s.
So, if I say.
Some kind of a keyboard.
I go Diane, who's the music guy? She'll know who I'm talking about. Okay.
Is Rich, Rich.
Okay, is there any more comments on the survey? How, and Mike, in past years, um, do we, do we publish the survey results? I can put it up on the website if you think, you know, people might want to see the results. I mean, I obviously.
Many times we would use it when we were doing the five-year plan.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's, that's coming up, so I gotta, I have to work on that as well. Oh, and I realized we completely bypassed communications, so let me just jump into that. It's been, it has been a day. Say, it's been a day, it's been a week and it's only been so. I'm going to slightly backtrack unless there's any more comments about the survey or anything. Because that comment on the strategic plan reminded me that I did not even talk about our communications. So, um, I met with Lieutenant Vanish two weeks ago to talk about our emergency policies that I drafted up. He took a copy and he's going to kind of take some time to review it and get back to me with any suggestions he has. And Charlie Dunlap also, and he, he does the, he does the, what is it, SEMA, I don't know, Emergency Management in town. He dropped off a copy of the town emergency policies. So, while they're not kind of structured for our building, I was going to kind of go through them and see what maybe we can morph into ours. So, yeah, so I'm working on that. I will check in with Lieutenant Vanish in a couple, he said to check in with him if I don't hear from him. So, I'm going to check in with him in a couple of weeks or so and see if he has any suggestions for us.
Lieutenant Vanish, is that right?
Yes, yeah. So, we are welcoming our new circulation staff member. Her name is Ellen Concio, I think that's how she said it's pronounced. And she's going to be starting on Monday.
Who's the young man that's out there now?
That is John. He's been here since, um, September. He normally works daytime, so.
Very nice, very helpful. Oh, my God, he's so refreshing.
He works at the Grandville Library and he lives in Grandville.
Ah, okay. Yes, yeah, so he, he normally does daytimes, but he's covering for another staff member who's out tonight, so.
He's covered. Quinn, Rich Quinn. He's the Southwick fan.
Very sorry, there was a tick.
Oh, no, that's, that's a reasonable crisis, that's fine. Tis the season.
I had one today too.
Okay, and then we are finishing up preparing for summer reading opening day. So, for anybody who wants to join the festivities, it is going to be June 25th from 10 to 12:30. It'll be fun, we have a pony coming.
I've got five different things for June 25th.
Well, that's all right.
All of a sudden, all in the same day.
You don't have to sell it to us, we totally agree that it will be super fun, we just will be in Virginia.
Oh, well, that's okay. So, we're going to have Ed the Wizard, he's coming to do a show. So, we're going to try it this year. Normally, it's going to be kind of been like a drop-in thing, people come roam around, do whatever they want. But this year, we're going to have a show specifically starting at 11:00. So, we're going to see if like, you know, kind of have like a centerpiece almost of, of the day. The pony will be back this year, so that's really fun. We'll have food and games and all kinds of, all kinds of fun stuff.
What's the theme this year?
Um, the theme of summer reading is Read Beyond the Beaten Path, so it's kind of like camping outdoorsy stuff. So, thankfully.
I love it.
To that. Ed the Wizard, I mean, he's doing balloon animals and stuff, so I mean, anything, if you word it right.
Yeah.
It'll be really fun. So, anybody who wants to stop by, it's for all ages, so. Okay, and I just posted today the summer page position, that's being advertised. I did post a closing date of May 31st because I'm going to be away starting, not this coming Monday, but the Monday after that. So, essentially, I'm just going to kind of let it run and collect applications while I'm gone, I'll come back and I'll hit the ground running with interviews and everything, hopefully getting somebody started the last week of June so that they can help out with opening day as well. I'm also trying, I've been super busy, but I'm trying to kind of get things going on our strategic planning for next year. My goal was to have it done April, May, I think, because they technically expire at the end of the year. So, I just want to get it done and get it in early, so there's no lapse in our plan. And Mike, I was going to ask, in, in previous years, have we, have we had a consultant or anybody from like MLS come?
I think the last time we had somebody come for like an hour or something. That was about it.
Gotcha. Okay, and the last thing, CW Mars had their big, next last big upgrade over the Patriot's Day weekend. Everything is, seems to be working good. We're all getting used to the new changes and whatnot. The only major difference that we've noticed is that now in the app, and I, I haven't done it myself, so I probably will describe it, not actually what it should be. But people can save their library card on their phone. So, that's, that's a new thing. And I was going to ask, you know, if you had any feedback or concerns about that. Because I asked around to other libraries and everybody's like, you know, it's a new feature, everybody's accepting it, so.
Best idea ever, ever, best idea.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, so, um, a couple of our staff were kind of, you know, concerned, they're like, oh, are we going to accept that? And it seems that everybody else is as well. So, if CW Mars built it into their app, obviously they're okay with it. I'm okay with it, so.
So, that's why I come in with it and you grab your, your scanner and.
Yeah, just scan your phone, yep, yep.
When can we start?
Anytime.
Can I download the app like now?
Yes, yep. Yep.
What, what app is it?
I think, and I, I think it's just called CW Mars or, yeah, CW Mars. Let me, let me look into it because I haven't had a chance to look into it yet, but if you go to your App Store tonight, I think it's just called the CW Mars app for that. I should probably try downloading it myself, I just haven't had the chance yet on my phone.
Can you download more than one card to the same phone?
Good question. You, I don't, you may have to log in and out between accounts.
Okay.
But that would be a nice feature. I'll play around with it. If it doesn't offer that feature, I may make a suggestion for future edits because that would be, that would be really exciting. More than one card. Yeah, let me, let me play around with it.
In the same vein, is it possible to log in, like, so it's an app, so you could log into it on different phones?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
With the same card?
Yep, yep, yep. It should work just like, like any old app that you use, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I will, I will, in the next day or two, I should probably get to downloading that and just playing around with it myself, but. So, yeah, so that makes it easier, so people can just come in, show us their phone and, you know, so a little, a few staff are kind of concerned, they're like, oh, is this, is this okay? And I, I think it's the modern times now, so convenience is key. And then that was the last thing for communications. So, I'm going to switch it over and again, I'm going to keep apologizing to y'all on Zoom because I sent some documents about the mural that Molly proposed in the children's room to you. And unfortunately, our scanner does black and white. So, if anybody really wants a color copy, I'm, I'm happy to send you guys something. But the basis of this, and I know we've talked about this.
Wait, can you just hold it up to the screen so we can see it?
Yeah. So, this is one. I, I don't, I don't know if you'll be able to see kind of the little details there, but, um, this one is kind of a night scene with the sun and moon, so on and so forth. I think Molly really liked this one, which is kind of like a, a day and night scene with farm animals and whatnot, so.
I think that one's perfect.
Yeah, so.
I think that one looks mildly biblical from on-screen.
Your point.
The only thing, can I make a suggestion? I mean, and you don't have to go with it, but, um, I love the farm animals, but it'd be really cool if it had a ram.
Oh, that's true.
Being.
That's a great idea, because that's the town mascot, right, the ram?
Yep. I just think a lot of.
I thought it was a school mascot.
School mascot, it's, but it's been all the high school.
Has a mascot?
Yeah, no, it's, but you might as well call it because anybody who's from Southwick and went to school and knows it's the rams.
Yeah, yeah.
It just would be a good way of incorporating the schools with.
Oh, yeah. And that's exactly why I'm sharing it with you guys, because you've got, you guys might see things that we don't. And to get any feedback or suggestions. So, basically, we did have, I talked with you guys about this six months ago or so, I'm not sure off the top of my head. But, um, we had a gentleman who was set up and was interested in doing it, unfortunately, he couldn't do it, so he had to back out. So, Molly found Chelsea Granger, and so those were her suggestions that she sent in for us. So, the total cost she was looking at was $2,000, which we already have the space up on the wall. This is for her labor, her supplies and all that fun stuff. I think Molly said she was looking at potentially doing it in September or early fall. And, and I think, when she's, I think she said Chelsea is, is local. I believe, I, I don't know for sure. I remember her saying she has some type of ties to the area.
She used to live here.
Oh, she did, okay. Oh, it doesn't say it in there?
The first 18 years of my life, my father still lives here.
Yeah, yeah, so she's, so she's local, which I think is a good connection.
I don't know, it doesn't sound like she is still.
Yeah, but her family, yeah.
She could be in Westfield.
Yeah.
She just doesn't say.
Yeah, so, um, I will, I will talk with Molly again, um, but it, just to reiterate, it sounds like everybody was, I don't know if, like, if you want to officially do. I mean, I don't think we need to vote on a sketch just yet because we probably want to do some, do some edits and.
I just want to go back because I've forgotten. How are we funding this?
I, I figure, you know, we usually get, people give us donations for the children's room or, or state aid or something, you know, this, this is, this is an instance where I feel like state aid is kind of something that, you know, not for essentially the hardware, but something to kind of make the library a little bit more exciting. So, um, yeah, I was thinking that either, you know, some, some grant money and/or, or the friends may be interesting, interested as well. I think I mentioned it to them. I think I mentioned it to them. Yeah, obviously, I don't think they'll fund the whole thing, but maybe a part of it or.
Yeah, because we're not making any money this year.
Yeah, yeah, so I didn't think they.
I don't remember what's there now, but we're not making.
There's nothing there. It's just kind of black.
No, no, no. And the friends, um, I don't know how much money is there or there is in the account.
Yep.
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
Um, the the example, the samples that she gave you, are those ones that she specifically already designed for this space? Or are these the ones that are on her website as examples of what she can do?
Nope, um, the first, the first one is, um, this one is a mural she did in Northampton. And then, um, the second one with the tree and the kind of night and day, that is the one. You you'll notice that we have kind of a triangular space on the wall, so she kind of designed it with that particular space in mind.
Oh, the picture on the bottom is gonna show what it's gonna look like on the wall.
Yeah, yeah, and she actually, I I don't think you guys will be able to see this, but, um, where's my camera? Yeah, she kind of transposed what it would look like in the children's room already.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, that was the the final sketch. But I think as far as I'm concerned, she, you know, she's open to to suggestions. It's just kind of a a draft to get things going.
What? I'm sorry. I thought I was muted.
No, no worries. So, um, Mike, do you do we need to vote? I mean, I don't know if this is something, you know, it is something with some permanence. So I don't know if the trustees want to vote on anything or.
We need to.
Okay.
It's coming out of state money or a check from the friends or whatever.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because it was something with a little bit more permanence up on the wall there. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Which minutes are in, but I think we.
Yeah, and I I'll I'll share drafts with you guys as as, um, they finalize the details and whatnot. So so we'll keep you guys in the loop. Okay, um, so, yeah, and then I did, I did include a couple of policies, um, to review. The first one I included again. Yeah, so this.
Okay.
I'm organizing.
No worries.
I think, oh, I don't think I made copies of this because I was just gonna ask you. Um, so the first one, so our study meeting spaces are not open yet. I'm working very hard on that. The truth was when we bought the table, um, the legs came in and they're not.
Haven't been here.
You know what I mean? So somebody with a wheelchair would not be able to wander and have enough leg space. So, um, and maintenance wasn't able to move the bracket. Legs out enough. So I got, um, some bases for them. Um, so just kind of a single pillar in the middle. And, um, they are, I think they said potentially tomorrow, but sometime soon, they're gonna come by and get everything attached. And so hopefully, everything works this time and they'll be open as soon as possible. Um, but I did want to ask you guys because I I realized this after our meeting last time in that, um, so we have all the paperwork to sign to state to to reserve a study space. Now, with the community room, we have people sign the waivers and everything because obviously, you know, a kid isn't gonna come in and book the community room. However, you know, we want, you know, kids to come like after high school and be able to use those spaces too. But you can't have a minor, you know, sign their name to anything. So I wanted to just bounce that back to you guys and see what you thought. I mean, you know.
Do do we really need it?
I mean, I don't, maybe we're just making a mountain out of a molehill. Maybe it's just kind of, you know, you call and you, well, I I'd like to have something, you know, that in paper that so somebody can say, you know, yes, I want to reserve this space. But I guess, you know, we don't need anybody to to sign anything. You know what I mean? Yes, Jen.
Um, sorry. So I kind of feel like with the community room, the paperwork is a little bit of overkill.
Oh, yeah.
I think that with the study carols, it might be worthwhile to have them. I mean, there's like a list of things that you can't do in them, right?
Well, we don't necessarily have, I mean, it's it's more, those are more of like, you know, in the in the community room, obviously, you know, you can't have like a for-profit business, you know, running something to kind of make money for themselves. But, um, the study spaces are more of like, you know, I I see it as like a tutor who wants to come in and tutor to make money. Yes, that's a business, but the space is perfect for it, if you know what I mean. So when I designed it last month, we had, um, something that people signed to kind of reserve it and also to just agree that they're not gonna make a complete mess out of it. But maybe, I mean, maybe we don't necessarily need it for those areas.
For the first time that they're gonna reserve it, have a parent sign that kind of a form. And then you have that that keep the form for each time that they use it. They don't have to be resigned all the time.
Okay.
But as long as a parent is made aware that they're responsible if there's damage, that may be enough, you know?
Yeah, but that is that gonna keep a teenager from using it because they're not gonna have their parents?
Maybe, yeah.
You know, that's the other thing as far as you have, now you're talking about seventeen-year-olds or so that are driving. We're gonna want to be tutoring or whatever.
Yeah.
And I they're gonna.
But but as a minor, they're they're not responsible. Their signatures don't mean.
Yeah, that will, and I and I wouldn't want them.
Okay, I'll give you about your second, but shush. Um, no, stop thinking just. So. I guess when they fill out for their library card, please stop. When you fill out for the library card, kids have to have their parent's signature for something, right? So is there any way that you can send it out to like everybody? And just be like, here is the permission to sign up for these things in the library. And everybody who has a library has the opportunity to do it. And then if a kid comes in and is like, oh, I want to do this, you can be like, aha, we sent it to you. Sorry that you haven't done it yet, but why don't you go home, check that email, get it filled out, and then next time you can do it?
Yeah, I just think that would be, I don't know how many cardholders we have offhand, but that would be, that would be a large scale.
Administrative burden on the staff.
Well, I mean, and I don't, you know, the thing is too, is like, um, with the, you know, the first time users that Maria suggested, you know, then we'd have to go be like, okay, did this person, you know, in referring to multiple lists and be like, did this person sign it? But this person didn't.
But that's what your computers for.
True, but also I do.
Black and white, you can scan it.
Yeah, I mean, and I do avoid, you know, I don't like keeping lists. You know what I mean? Like keeping lists of, we can't keep lists of what patrons have checked out and and things like that. Um, so maybe, I mean, maybe the best thing going forward is just to, I mean, in in all reality, we sit at the desk and we can kind of see what's going on over there. So, I mean, we can, a minor could fill out a form and say, you know, I want to request this room for this date in this day. And I say, yes, great, I'll put you in the calendar, so it's booked. Um, but.
Try and see what happens.
Yeah, I guess. It's it's all new to me, so I'm just trying to figure.
You know, I'm trying to figure.
And I am, I am a notorious over thinker, so I probably.
I mean, you can show them the rules, a minor or two, and let them know that they would be responsible.
We can, you know, easily post the rules somewhere and it's.
Kids don't necessarily need to know that their signature doesn't mean anything.
Oh, yeah.
Do you know? I mean, if they sign something, they really wouldn't know it doesn't mean anything. A kid wouldn't.
So maybe, maybe if we just start with, um, just start with with a request form only, you know, if somebody wants to reserve it, great. No need to sign anything. They can just handwrite in, you know, the day, the time they want. I have a calendar that we can just put everything in and it is really.
They have, if they have a place where they're signing up, couldn't we just put on that sheet like, in signing up, you are agreeing to not do all these things that are not cool, like right on the desks and permanent marker?
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, so they're not necessarily signing, they're just, you know, signing their name or anything. They're just kind of, this is the form, they've seen it, they've acknowledged it. And, yeah, I think that's good enough.
What do you do for computers?
We, um, what we do.
For the minors, that would probably be the best.
Well, if if somebody's signing up for a computer, um, adults use obviously our public computers and then kids use ones in the kids' room. And they just need like their library card or school ID or something.
So they don't need to sign anything for that?
No need to sign anything. Yeah, I mean, I guess that goes the same way too, because they're listed, you know, you can't download anything illegal or plagiarize or so on and so forth. So, yeah, maybe we're, maybe I'm overthinking it. But, I mean, we can start with that, see how it goes and.
Yep, from there. From there.
Okay, um, so I have. So this is gonna be, um, double sided. So, um, I brought up our policy for the use of library by minors because, um, we, it's it's been happening as of late. It it was very quiet during the COVID period. But, you know, as of late, there was especially, there was one night where there were three young girls waiting for a ride. And me and another staff person waited here for a half an hour after closing. Um, so when when I first drafted this policy, um, Chief Bishop was, um, the chief of police. And he recommended that, um, you know, if if the child's ride doesn't arrive in thirty minutes after closing, then the library can just call over to the police department and say, you know, there's a child waiting, the staff have to leave. Um, and I wanted to check in with the new chief of police, Chief Landis, to kind of get, you know, because maybe a different chief has a different concept on how things are done. Obviously, you know, we we don't want to be a burden on them. Um, and he he did suggest, um, changing, well, he did, he did suggest that we could potentially add, you know, that, um, if staff aren't able to wait at closing time, then, uh, we can just kind of call them right away and say, hey, there's a child waiting, you know, staff aren't able to stay. Um, because I do, I do require two staff members.
Will they come and get the child?
Well, they'll come and wait with the child.
Okay, I mean, it says notified, but what does that mean?
Yeah, so they they'd come and, um, essentially wait with the child. Yeah. Yep, um, so that way, you know, and ninety-nine percent of the time, some of us are able to wait. You know, I do require two people just to wait, just for safety reasons. Um, so, and I think ninety-nine percent of the time, you know, our staff are able to wait. But there, you know, there may be some times that we close, you know, it it really only happens on Thursdays and Fridays when we close at five. So this kind of protects the staff and that, you know, I mean, if there's a child waiting at five and and there are no staff can wait or only one staff person can wait. Um, because, you know, our our staff have to, they have families, they have kids, they have to pick up two. So, you know, and waiting that one night for a half an hour was very long, so.
Well, see, you're also getting into another issue which you've kind of tried to avoid. If you're telling staff they have to stay, then are they on the clock?
Yes, they are. And they're.
Well, you know.
They are and they and they get overtime, which, you know, it's not budgeted, we're not budgeting for overtime. So there's that as well. So, I mean, at least in this aspect, I mean, like I said, ninety-nine percent of the time, two of us are gonna be able to wait. Um, but if if for whatever reason we we can't or we aren't able, or if there's only one person, I don't want just one person waiting, you know, so. And this, this was after, you know, I came up with this after discussing it with Chief Landis because I just wanted to get the new chief's perspective because, you know, they're the ones we're gonna be calling, so I didn't want to like, you know.
No, I think that's good. I agree with it.
And, um, yeah, so I.
How old were these kids that were sitting there waiting for their ride?
I would say, you know, ten. I'm I'm, I'll be the first to admit, I'm the worst at guessing kids' ages. I I can't tell. But, um, I would say they were about ten, eleven. But it was also on the night that there was a very bad thunderstorm outside. So we didn't, we definitely did not want to leave, you know, especially in wintertime, you know, when it gets dark at five o'clock. Even like a twelve, fourteen-year-old, not really comfortable leaving them alone in the dark. So, you know, we just, we end up waiting with them. And, um, on the flip side of that page, um, that's that's the old policy. I did remove the line, um, that, you know, that's at the end of number three, that kids have to have a beeper number because that, no, because of beeper anymore, so. But, um, yeah, the the front page is the the newest, um, most updated policy that I put up for review.
Do we have to accept it?
Uh, yeah, the changes too.
Okay. I, Tracy, make a motion to accept the new policy for the library, um, by the minor policy. This is the library.
A second. All votes in favor? Michael, yes.
I'm not done reading it yet, so.
Okay, Tracy, yes.
Tammy, yes?
That must be John. Yeah, checking the door.
Yeah.
It always scares everybody like a quarter to eight.
Okay, Felden, aye.
So I think that was everybody.
Yes.
Okay. Great, um, and then I just have, um, I don't, I guess we can send it around so everybody has a copy, um. So I am just, um, as I'm, you may or may not be aware, there's been kind of a lot of, um, challenges on books and items and libraries collections. Um, so I sent everybody a copy of our, um, children's and adult materials selection policies. And there isn't a date on the children's one, so I don't know when it was written. Um, but the adult one was approved at the two thousand and three trustee meeting in December. So it has been quite a while since they've been reviewed. Um, but I just, I wanted to, um, and I'm gonna spend some time going going through similar policies just to make sure that ours kind of stand up to to the test of time and just to make sure that, you know, they they cover us in the event that anybody should ever question or have a concern about materials or anything like that. Um, because it is happening a lot in the library community, not here yet that I'm aware of, but, um, you know. Oh, well, well, so I I just wanted to have, um, you know, I just, and I think, I think despite being, I don't have a date for the children's one, but it probably must be around the same time, you know, despite being twenty years old, they still, they they still seem to be very comprehensive and, um, cover a lot of ground. So until I have the time to kind of sit down and look at other policies and kind of see how we can update ours, basically, the premise of these is that, you know, anybody who has an issue or a comment or a complaint, um, they fill out the resource reaction form and then, um, I contact them directly, discuss it. And if it needs to be discussed more, then they can come into a a trustee's meeting and discuss it with the board. So I just wanted to, um, send those to you guys so you're aware of kind of what they look like. Or if you think that there's a better process or procedure, then I'm all ears. Um, but I'll also, um, you know, over the next month or two, hopefully, um, summer is a difficult time because we're very busy. Yes, Jen?
Just looking at it, you might want to relook at the gifting policy because I know you were saying in the last one that the friends don't want any more gifts.
Yeah, no more gifts. Yeah, so we can, we can look at that. Yeah, I think that's that's a good idea to look at, just to kind of make the wording there. You know, I mean, yeah, I'll take a look at that one. But, um, yeah, I mean, so these these policies will stand as as of now until I get the chance to actually look at things more in depth. Um, so I don't know if anybody has a chance to briefly look at them. If there are any other comments, then Jen's. So I don't know if anybody has a chance to briefly look at them. If there are any other comments than Jen's comments of anything we can look at to just make them more comprehensive, anything like that. So there's nothing to kind of vote on that tonight. I just wanted to send you guys something so that you know that it's, that it's on my mind and that we're definitely gonna be kind of looking at it and seeing if there's anything that we can do to, to update or change or to just make it a more secure policy for us to have, just in case something were to ever be questioned.
That same comment on gifts is in the adult.
Yeah, I think, I think. Yeah, I think, I think they're the exact same wording. So.
I'm gonna clean out my bookshelf quick before we change the policy.
Yeah, I mean, I think, and I think everything is, is pretty straightforward enough that it, that it really has stood the test of time. And but I'll definitely be looking at what other people are doing and kind of going from there to figure out if there's any updates or any changes that we need to make. Any other questions or comments on those? Okay, if, if nobody has anything, I am gonna move on to the minimum staffing policy. So I had put this together during.
I'm sorry, Denter, I, we still have a quorum if I leave. I need to go do an appointment.
Uh, yeah, Jen, Mike, Marie and Tammy.
Okay, thank you. I'm so sorry.
Night, Tammy.
Have a good night, everybody.
Okay, so I sent everybody a copy of the minimum staffing policy. We created this during COVID to kind of determine how many staff we need to open. So page one, well, the flip side, that's our, that's our current policy. The new one on the back with the highlights is potential changes. Kind of what, what brought this, so how it works with our policy is, as it stands now, is we need two people, two, two staff members to open the library. And I'd require them to be at the front desk at all times to kind of keep an eye on the main section of the library. There was, and obviously, you know, we don't unfortunately have the staff to, to make sure our children's library is covered at all times. But, so what, what happened a couple of weeks ago? There was a little boy who was running in the library, tripped over his foot and conked his head on a bookcase. And the mother rushed him out of there so fast that if the children's librarian was not sitting there, we have, may have not have known it happened. So we may not have been able to fill out, you know, all the appropriate paperwork and anything like that. So I was, I was thinking of, you know, maybe we need to chain this. Maybe we need to have a minimum of three people to open the building, two people at the main desk, and then one person in the children's room, knowing that, you know, we, we won't, we, we just unfortunately don't have the staffing to make sure that our children's room is covered at all times. So it may, there may be gaps of like a break of an hour here when our librarian is on break or if she has to run and go do something or run into a program. So, so I wrote another sample policy, you know, that the library can't open with fewer than three employees. Two must be stationed in the main area, one in the children's room. I did also add that the two people at the main area of the library, one must be trained in circulation duties. Because, you know, while all of our staff know the basics, only, you know, certain people are trained on doing kind of the in-depth running of the circulation desk in and out of the day-to-day type things that somebody, you know, who say works in the reference section, they may not know how to handle everything, you know, they can do the basics, checking in and checking out. But anything that's kind of more in-depth, they may not be able to handle. So. That, yeah, so, so essentially, it, it comes down to, you know, the library is allowed to operate with only two staff members present. They must be in the main area if the third is taking a break but will return. And I did have highlighted that the children's room is not able to be covered a hundred percent of the time. I don't know if we want to include that because that's almost inviting somebody to say, let me figure out when the children's room is not covered and I'm gonna go in there and mess around with stuff or something like that, you know what I mean? I don't know if that's, you know, we want to have that in there to kind of cover our bases so that, you know, we acknowledge that it's not covered all the time. But I also worry that that can kind of be like, oh, when is, when is the librarian on lunch break? I'm gonna go in there and mess around with her computer or something.
Well, I think we've survived for twenty-something years without putting it in writing. So maybe we don't need to have that sentence in there.
Okay.
I know what a lot of people.
I'm thinking instead of is, just say, may not be able to be covered one hundred percent of the time, period. And just leave out due to breaks would be my thought too. If you want that sort of thought in there.
Yeah, I mean, I, I wasn't sure if that's something that you'd want to kind of cover ourselves in the event that something ever happened. But I don't, like I said, and I feel like it also can kind of open the doors to, you know.
So I would either tote it down or, you know, or as Michael said, just get rid of it.
So, yeah, but so, so on the flip side, we, we've been doing well with opening with only two people in the library. There's been a couple of times, you know, especially at night when there's only been two people. But, you know, I just, after that incident, it kind of made me, and I was like, well, I mean, on the other hand, though, if we do need three people to be here to open the building, then there's a greater chance that we're gonna have to close because we don't have enough staff to open. I mean, ninety-nine percent of the time, I can get two of our staff members to work. But sometimes getting a third might be difficult, especially during this time when, you know, people can be out for a week at a time with, with COVID or who knows, or it's unpredictable. Yes, Jen? Oh, you're muted.
Sorry.
That's okay.
We possibly post a sign on the children's room door that just says, this room is not always staffed. You are responsible and use the facilities under your own risk. And then you don't have to worry.
Yeah, so that, that could potentially be an option. And I did, I did ask other libraries, I sent out a general email blast to other libraries to say, you know, if you're kind of roughly around our population size, you know, how many minimum staff do you have? A lot of them say two or three, one of them said four. But a lot of these places are multiple floors, so it doesn't really always work with our building scheme. I mean, but, I mean, it was worth asking to get an idea. But a lot of libraries, you know, were fortunate enough to not have multiple floors that we can do. You know, some people suggested, well, if you only have two people in the main area and there's nobody in children's, close off the children's room. I really don't want to do that. That would be kind of like a last resort type thing. I would like to avoid that at all costs.
It seems like, hold on, they have a management, so they must have.
Yeah.
Either their librarian or their assistant.
Yep, so somebody must be there at all times. Yep.
See, some libraries have a children's department head and an adult department head.
Right.
Yeah. We don't have that. You know, our challenge is right now is we don't have the staffing, but we're also really growing, like as you can see with the number of circulation, the number of cards, you know. We're growing, but we don't have the staff to almost keep up with it per se. Which is why, you know, we did try to get another evening position at night, which would have really helped out with the staffing levels. But that's out of the cards this year, so we're just gonna try to go through with what we have.
But just on that point, Lynn was looking to, in addition to adding an extra person, upbringing the salary for the assistant director. That's in the printed budget that you're gonna see next week at the annual town meeting. It survived.
Oh, good. Good.
I dropped the.
I did. Yeah, I got that. Thank you. Yep. So, so what, what are, what are your thoughts? I mean, we could continue as is with side one and what we've been doing and having only two people in the building. And just, you know, knowing that there will sometimes be time where our children's room is not covered. Or we can, we can attempt to require three people to in the main area, one in children's. Or, I mean, kind of the middle ground is keeping our policy with two people. And, you know, and I can say that, you know, as other libraries have to their policy that we can operate with two people, but for no more than two hours at a time. So it's not like two people are gonna be here from nine AM to five PM just by themselves. So that way, people can still have, you know, absolutely still have their breaks and everything like that.
I think the middle ground, personally. I don't know. That's just my opinion.
Okay, so, so keeping, keeping the same policy. So if only, so two staff members, two staff members, but for no more than two hours at a time, just to make sure that.
They get breaks. Yep.
And then post a sign and do a walkthrough every twenty-five minutes if somebody isn't there.
Okay, if, if everyone is happy with that and comfortable with that, then, then I think that's, that's what we'll try to do. I mean, obviously, every, every effort will be made to, to fill, fill the children's room and make sure that it's staffed. I mean, we do have the cameras, so if something were to ever happen. But if we don't have a reason to look at the cameras, we may not notice unless somebody reports something to us. But, you know, they're, they're there if something were to ever happen. So if everybody's happy with that, then if, if you just want to approve with the change, then.
I, okay.
You make the motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve with the changes for the minimum staffing policy.
And Maria.
All those in favor? Michael, yes.
Maria, yes.
Tracy, yes.
Felden, yes.
Okay, and then that was, that was the last thing for me. Great, so if somebody wants to.
Make a motion, will you turn?
Yeah, that was Maria.
I second it.
Tracy seconds. All right.
All those in favor?
I.
Tracy, yes.